Welcome this evening. At this time, I will call the meeting of the Marshall City Council to order with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. The council is connected by distance. So at this time, I'll ask Kyle Box, city clerk, to take the role.
Mayor Burns.
Yes, here.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes, here.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Here.
John De Kramer.
Here.
Russ LaBatt.
Here.
Jim Lozinski.
Here.
And the council is all present. Once again, thank you, council, for your participation in this method. The, we have an agenda before us. Are there any changes to that agenda? If not, then we'll move then to the first item. That would be to consider the approval of the minutes from the two work sessions and one regular council meeting. All were held on June 23rd, 2020. The council does have the minutes of all three of those meetings. Are there any corrections to note at this time?
I would move to approve second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ to approve the minutes as they have been presented. We'll move to a vote. And Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number three. This would be to consider the award of bids for a street sweeper for the street department, the, and our stormwater management. The Jason Anderson, city engineer, director of public works will present this. Jason?
Thank you, mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thanks. The city opened bids on July 10th for the replacement of our 2015 Elgin Pelican Street Sweeper. You've got a bid tabulation attached. We did only have one bid for another Pelican product. The city solicited three different proposals, one for a new sweeper with a trade-in of the old sweeper, one for a new sweeper only, and one for purchasing the used sweeper only. So you can see the proposals A and B attached there. Staff's original recommendation after reviewing the bid was to award proposal A, including the trade-in, for a total net cost of $172,059. The 2020 budget did include $180,000 for this purchase. Since that recommendation, it was brought to our attention, or the question was asked if staff had considered keeping the sweeper in the fleet and operating with two sweepers and then also delaying the replacement of the sweepers instead of every five or six years, delaying it out to seven, eight, or nine years, putting less hours on the equipment and having some obviously redundancy in backup, but then also being able to do more sweeping in a timely fashion during leaf fall or early spring and dedicating more forces to it. Upon reviewing discussion with Dean Kudron of the street department, we do think that that would be a viable option if that's what the council likes to do. So I think that I would open that up to discussion. Staff is open and accepting of proposal A to purchase the new unit and sell the old unit, but we're also open to the discussion of operating with two. Dean Kudron is here to answer us, to help us answer some questions if you have any as well.
Okay, thank you, Jason. We'll open up for questions. Or discussion.
I'll, I'll start out. The, the issue was brought up and I'd gotten into a discussion with this, with Jason and asked him and to consult with Dean. I did not talk to Dean, but you know, kind of looking at, especially in the spring of the year, is probably the single biggest yielding session for, as far as compliance with our MS4 stormwater program. And it seemed to make sense when you think about what all has to be maintained in our storm system, both with street sweeping, cleaning of catch basins, and then also our sedimentation or storm treatment ponds. Long-term, it seemed to me to make sense if we can get out before we get the, the kind of the washing rains and get the, the salt and sand mixture off of the streets and that debris, and then also again in the fall with leaf fall to keep those organics out of that system. I think there's some benefit there. And then the discussions come out further about having some redundancy, but also less pressure on the sweeper to run year-round or all summer long and maybe hit it in the, in kind of the peak times, go after it hard with, with two sweepers, with two operators, and then freeing those people up for other projects too during the year. So I know that Jason and Dean did talk this over and came up with it. Now it would be kind of a big thing first out to get started with this because we're leaving that trade value on the table. But it just seems to me to make sense that we'd be trading in sweepers that are four or five years older with the same hours on it that we're trading out now in the five-year window. Might actually be a better market too for us to sell auction. And again, that's all speculation for what that would bring down, down the road. But it just seems to me to balance out better than to, to just be really going hard after the one sweeper. And I think Dean did answer the question to Jason, as I understand it, that it wouldn't take a second dump truck and a second dump truck operator. It might make that truck more efficient too if we're running with two sweepers. That's a small bonus, but it is still a value added. And with that, I'll just stop with that statement and then let the discussion go.
I'll maybe add to that. The, I think this is an opportunity. As we saw the bids, we see that the existing one still has value. But if you only have one, you have to replace it more often because if that one goes down, you don't have any. And of course, the real purpose of the, of street sweeping is to remove the sedimentation and the chloride that would be contributed to our stormwater system and ultimately our, our ponds and ultimately the river to keep that out of the river. So, and the time of the year when you really need to do that is right after snow melt in the spring of the year. We have a lot of streets and the number of streets, miles of streets is growing substantially over the years. And we have the same number, same capacity of street sweeping as we had 30 years ago. So I think this is an opportunity and the, you know, but we'd have to kind of look in the future instead of replacing this every three years. You get on a longer rotation and you know, similar to what the Zamboni at the Ice, at the Ice Arena is on. So you always, you'll be trading in your oldest one. So this one, you know, might be traded in three to five years from now. But then you'd have the, the new one that would then replace it. So I think we have an opportunity to kind of look into the future and, and address this now. Other input?
Jim Lozinski here. Craig and I chatted about this in, in the two sweepers and my concern is trading this sweeper off now. We haven't used it. We, we've used it, but the value there from keeping it from now to probably year eight or nine, isn't going to change the trade-in value. And that's where Craig and I had talked about the two sweepers. I mean, this, we chatted about this a couple of days ago. It could be a cost savings by, by buying a new one and then running the old one 10 years and in five years, rotate them every five years. I do agree with you, Bob and Craig. It is a cost, it could possibly cost savings. I think we need to do some more research on it, but I think there's an opportunity here. I do know, I looked online, you can find everything online. I did not find a used sweeper much newer than a 2012, and they were all municipal sweepers that I found online. So that tells me other cities are running these sweepers eight, seven, eight years. And I, I looked at the resale value of what they're giving us for ours. I couldn't find one under 80,000 with a 2012 with the mileage that we have on ours. So I, I think it is an opportunity because I think we're giving up quite a bit on our trade-in on what this sweeper is really worth.
And just to add to that too, in defense, you know, I know that when we discussed this as an, as the equipment committee and we discussed and, and agreed to bring forward the proposition for the new sweeper. If we're operating on one sweeper, I am not in favor of holding this on that much longer because we lose the, the reliability of it if it's our, if it's our primary focus. Not that we're going to use the old one less, but we can better accommodate a breakdown in maintenance if we're running them kind of in that older, newer tandem set. So to me, it, it makes sense that way as far as milking more out of if we maintain one sweeper, then I'm not in, in favor of stretching out the trading. Cause in that five years, those guys put a lot of use on that thing runs, I bet almost constantly during the summertime. There are a lot of streets to do. And that one operator probably spends the vast majority of his time in that sweeper during the summer. And we could also free that person up too for, for other projects as we move forward kind of more with less, but I know I'll stop with that.
Okay, other.
John De Kramer, how are, do we have enough operators available? Like can operate two at the same time?
So Dean, do you want to address that?
Yeah, we would. It's what the advantage of having the two, we could send them out in two days and do the town versus a week. You know what I'm saying? So you could send it out, do the, the whole town in say three days of two machines. And then you could use those people, those other days of the week for other projects versus spending their whole, like Phil, he's in there pretty much every day throughout the summer running that machine. So, and I know you were talking about trucks too, you know, the one truck, you can park one truck in an area and you can cover a whole area of the town and just dump it in that truck. And we've done it before where we just, you know, when the truck is full, if we got a guy that's swinging by there, he can run that truck and dump it, or one of the drivers could dump it also. So there is a definite advantage to having two machines. And we discussed this a couple of years ago, or actually two machines ago, but that machine then was totally different than what we operate today. This machine is all hydraulic. So I will agree, these machines are, the way they're built today would probably go out nine years. Especially if you use two of them and you only put in half the hours on them.
Other input?
This is Glenn, Glenn Bearcooler. I have a question for Dean. Why are we replacing the machine now? If it's still working, why want to replace it this year and not next year?
Well, again, this machine, like I said, in the last two years, we put over $14,000 in it. And then when it goes down, you order the parts. We try and have parts on hand as much as we can, but even though it's like any other piece of equipment, it's a bear to work on. But when it's down, it's usually probably a week. So there you are, you got a week where your downtime is, you're down. So it, like I said, it's, yeah, it, it probably, this machine, we won't be able to get till at least December. So we're probably going to have another, probably I would say in the neighborhood of 450 hours on it. So that'll bring the hours and the miles up, of course, pretty compatible to what our last machine had on it in five years.
The reason I'm asking is if, if it's getting to the point where the machine is very costly to maintain and we want to get rid of it, why, why would we then want to keep it if it's being very costly to maintain?
Like I say, we just put in the main whole belt system on this pickup unit. There's two big rollers that carry all the debris up to the hopper. We just replaced that here this spring before we got rolling with it because the old ones were wearing out. And that was probably, that was close to $2,800 if I remember right, which ain't a huge, but he still got downtime when we're doing it. Fortunately, we could do it before the season. And that's what we try and do every, every winter, we bring it in and completely go through it.
As far as justifying, councilman, as far, as far as helping to justify the use of two and why you would maybe consider that is, you know, you would be putting fewer hours on it and you would be, and we're comfortable extending the life out on these, like Councilman Lozinski said, maybe 10 years and on a five and five type of schedule or, 10 years with one being newer, closer to five years old. I think that makes a lot of sense. And you can kind of tolerate a lot of downtime if you've got another one that will continue to run. Plus, we just think that the fewer hours, we could probably keep them going longer and maybe it's more cost-effective. The trade-in value that was pointed out, you're, that's probably a good point. From now, we're getting $68,000 on this one. If you were to replace it in a few more years, you'd probably still get $50,000 or $55,000. So the trade-in is still kind of there, but you're kind of in this tough place when it's your only machine that you don't want it to be down as much as it's going to start being down.
Yeah. And Glenn, those are, you know, the questions that you brought up are all good questions. And if, if we call back to when we talked about this at the equipment committee meeting, those are, those are a lot of the same topics that we talked there. And it was, part of it wasn't so much that it's that the machine costs money to maintain. It's that when it's down, unless we, unless we have McQueen's come out or, you know, if we ship it down there. I mean, it still takes the guys a week or two to get the parts and get it repaired. And it was that downtime during the critical cleaning times that we really couldn't justify. And so looking at reliability and downtime over cost of repair was, was really the driving force, as I recall, at the equipment committee meeting when we agreed to recommend to purchase a new sweeper. So I hadn't thought about the tandem or the redundant operation at that time. But since then, this discussion opened up later last week and over the weekend. And it just seemed to me to make sense to bring it forward. It could have maybe waited and brought it back to the equipment committee meeting, but we do have a, an active bid out here. So I just thought it would be best to bring this discussion out for the meeting tonight.
And thank you. And Jason, just for your information, your volume is fading in and out. So you may want to reposition yourself. Okay, other input?
Mr. Mayor, just a question. Earlier this year, we had a opportunity with lawn mowers to get into a program with, I want to say leasing and replace them every few years. Is there a pro, similar program for street sweepers, Jason or Dean? Do you know?
Dean checked into that. He did get a lease proposal and we can tell you pretty conclusively that it's not an attractive deal. It essentially amounts to making five payments every, over five years that cover 233, $234,000. So you're getting seven grand out of the deal in the end. It makes a lot more sense for us just to finance them the way we've been doing and, and get our resale. They, they essentially spread out the payments, but take away your salvage value.
Okay, any other input? If not, you have the, you know, the two options. What are the wishes of the council? I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the purchase of the new street sweeper on the straight out bid that was received from McQueen and that we retain the old street sweeper. So we approve the purchase of the new street sweeper for $240,259 and we retain the old, the existing sweeper and we go on to a replacement schedule that continues that for, you know, every seven to 10 years, depending on how this works through.
Motion by Craig, is there a second?
I will second.
Seconded by John. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just where did the question, where are the funds coming from?
Jason, this is a stormwater management.
Yes, that's correct.
And Mr. Mayor, did you have, did, was this stated that it's been budgeted for? And, and remind me how much the budgeting was for?
Jason, are you going to address that?
Yes, I can. $180,000 was included in the budget for this purchase. Our net cost will be 172.
Well, no, that was for proposal A.
Yeah, we, I'm sorry, we went with the other proposal. Yeah, it's a 240,000, the full purchase price, 240,259. So I would probably have to defer to the finance department with the alternative motion as to whether the surface water budget could absorb that impact.
Do you want to address?
I was just going to ask the question is, is this something we should maybe delay one year to work into the budget? I like the idea, but I don't want to drain our budget at this time to do it. I, I think it's an idea that we, we should maybe look at how we finance this better before we jump into it. But I do think it's a good idea to pursue.
And that it is non, it is general levy funds. It is out of the surface water fund balance.
Correct. And they do have reserves. Also, if the 68,000, if, if it's looking, looking to be like it's, it's going to hurt the overall impact of the stormwater fund, we could potentially repay ourselves back next year. We could just add it in as a, a line item in there. I don't foresee a $68,000 impact being detrimental to this fund. So I, I guess my recommendation is if you guys are for this, we, we can make a way to make it happen.
And Jason, you also stated you don't expect delivery or maybe Dean said, you don't expect delivery till by December of 2020?
Right. That is correct.
So if we don't expect delivery till December, if we delayed this a month to figure out financing, take delivery in January or February, what difference would that make?
And that, I don't know if you want to address that, but it probably would make no difference if it was December or if it was January.
From the, from the finance standpoint, it wouldn't make the difference. I don't know how long the quote is good for. I guess that would be my question would be how long is this quote good for?
I think it's 30 days, but no, let me look here.
Typically in our bids, it's, it's 30 days, but.
That's what it says here. No bidder may withdraw his bid within 30 days.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So other discussion on the motion. Is the motion on the table? I'll move us to a vote then. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
No.
Glenn Bearcooler.
No.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
No.
Motion does not pass. I'll entertain an alternate motion.
I would make a motion to table it until the next meeting so we can look at the financing and get more information on the finance it to move forward with it.
Motion.
I would second that.
Motion to table by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
The one question that I would have, you know, like, like Councilmember Lozinski said, you can look at these. And again, there's two things that I'm looking at. When we buy, if this one started to cost money, is it better to buy a used one that's been rebuilt? Cause you can find those. Or do we sell ours on the open market if we just put a lot of money in and see what we can get? Because we might get more on the open market from another city that's looking for it than what the trade-in value is. So those are just two things that I think that staff should look at while we're tabling this for the next meeting. For the next month.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, great.
Yeah. And Steve, that's a, that's a good point. And actually Jason and I discussed that earlier that if we don't go with the thought of keeping it. And like Councilmember Lozinski said too, that looking at it online, you know, this might be a very good item for us to not trade, just to buy straight out and then put this one out on the market for bids. You know, that's, that is certainly something that I would consider. And I think that there's a good chance because of how well our guys do take care of these, that we would get pretty good. Now, one of the things that Jason said, and I think he's probably right, is the five-year-old Pelican that we currently have is probably too nice to really entice the private contractor market and might be too much value. Running it out, further out may still keep the value the same and put more bidders on it. Because at that point in time, it would be more attractive to like a seal code and chip contractor that's just going to really use it in rough duty for the last end of its life. So those are all things that were also discussed when we were kind of looking at this option is how do we best manage this? So I'm certainly not against us figuring out to make sure that the financing of this is right. I want to get it out here to, to look at an opportunity. If we wait, you know, 30 days or, or if we wait and, and put everything off and do it next year or however, I'm fine with it. I just think that it merits consideration.
This is John De Kramer. Just a clarification question. The motion, as Councilman Meister mentioned, is this to table for one month, which would exceed the bid? Or is this to table till the next meeting?
We can only table till the next regular meeting.
So the intent of the motion is to table to the next meeting, my, in which I made the motion, was to table to the next meeting to look at financing. Cause I think the option of keeping both of them is a very viable option.
Which would stay within our 30-day window on bids.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's, that's correct, Jason.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number, let me see, we had everybody vote there, didn't we? Okay, agenda item number four would be consider the award of bids for a dump box plow and wing for the street department. Once again, Jason.
Thank you, mayor. Also on July 10th, we opened bids for the dump box plow and wing for the street department. This would replace the existing 2001 International with dump box and 12-foot snow plow. You've got an attached bid tabulation. Since we received bids on Friday morning, by the time we got the packet out, we did some more review in the afternoon and we did identify an issue with the apparent low bid. The issue being that two items that were supposed to be included in, with the, with the spec and with what they provide us were listed as options and therefore it increased the price of their bid by, Dean gave the numbers.
1165.
$1,165. So that changes the, their bid to $155,962.75. And that actually makes the apparent low bid from the bid opening and what we recommended the second low bid by a total difference in cost of $20. That being said, upon reviewing the, what was being provided by the second low bid and the new low bid, we determined that, that, that dump body that was being provided on this fat truck did not fully meet the specifications. Therefore, it's still staff's recommendation to make the award for the. to make the award for the, to the same company with the same dump body that we originally included in the memo. So I know that that's a little bit confusing, but staff would just change our recommendation to read that we would authorize the purchase of the two thousand and twenty-one international chassis with dump box, plow, and wing to the street department from North Central International in the amount of one hundred and fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars and seventy-five cents, including the nine thousand dollar trade-in of the existing two thousand and one. If you have questions on that, we can try to address them.
Hey, thank you, Jason. Questions?
John De Kramer, I guess that was actually going to be one of my questions is, you've got three different chassis you're listed. Without getting into a lot of detail, could you kind of hit the, the pros and cons of each of the three?
Three different dump bodies. And Dean, if you want to speak to that.
There's two different chassis companies, but three different equipment suppliers. And most recently, all of our trucks have come from Cry Steel Truck. So it's, and I see in the spec, the one, I don't know if you've seen the specs or if you got them, in there, the, the wing has got a paraglide lift on the, on the toe of it. And the other company, the Twin Star, couldn't meet that spec because they don't sell Monroe equipment. They furnish their own, and they make their own equipment. So that's where the, the twenty dollars comes in. Apparently, they couldn't meet that paraglide system is one of the issues, but I'm not real familiar with any of the Twin Star equipment, the Cry Steel equipment. We got four trucks with them all on there, and we hadn't basically no issues with any of that equipment. And the low bid chassis and dump body is the international truck chassis with the Cry Steel dump body.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I guess the fact that it's similar to what we have four of already is a positive on my end.
Advantage of that is we do carry parts on hands for, on hand for these. So if we went to a different type of system, not that we can't do that, I'm, and I'm not here to make a bet of anybody's product, but we do have parts on hand for these. Most of this equipment are ready.
Any other questions for Jason or Dean?
Um, I just question comments. I think this is a, a good purchase. Here we have a truck that's twenty years old that we're replacing. Twenty years is a good life for a vehicle. It's been used. My only question would be to you, Dean, since our trade-in is only nine thousand dollars. And we can trade it in, I'm fine with that, but do you ever run short of plow trucks where for nine thousand dollars, it wouldn't hurt to have one sitting around?
I'll agree, you know, I don't have an issue with keeping it, and it'll get used, but it's, how much stuff do you keep on hand, you know? But for nine thousand dollars, I'll agree, it's not much. You can't even hardly get the plow for that. So, no, I'll agree.
Well, and if we have, if we decide, if you don't use it, we could sell this ourselves fairly easily for nine thousand plus too, I'm assuming.
Right. And I did go online, just check some of the auction sites, and they're right in that price range, anywhere from six thousand to ten thousand dollars for the truck. So with the miles in the year, anyway. But it would definitely be a backup if we needed it, which now we currently use wastewater or we do pull one from the airport if we have to do.
Dean, would you have the space to store it?
Well, that's getting to be a problem too, but that can sit in cold storage.
Other input?
Mr. Mayor, this is Councilmember Meister. The only question I have is that we've got, again, we're over budget according to what's been approved. We approved a hundred and fifty. This is with the nine thousand, a hundred and fifty-five almost. If we take that nine thousand off, we're talking about a hundred and sixty-three thousand. So then it's thirteen thousand dollars over budget. And again, I'm not in favor of going over budget unless we absolutely positively have to. So feedback on that.
And unlike the, the previous agenda item, this is not funded out of an enterprise fund. This is funded out of our general levy. So other input? If not, you have the recommendation that is for the purchase with the trade. I would entertain a motion.
I move the recommendation.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by Jim. Discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes?
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
No.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
No.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to our, the next agenda, which is the consent agenda. I'll read through the items that are on the consent agenda. They include consider the rate extension for the group long-term disability insurance policy. In the wastewater treatment facilities, we have a payment application to Magny Construction, a payment, a payment invoice to American Engineering Testing, and a payment invoice to Bolton and Ming. Also on the consent agenda, the introduction of the ordinance amendment to permit some slaughtering of animals in butcher shops in the general business district and industrial district, and permit landscaping business in the general industrial district, and call for a hearing. Agenda item number eight on the consent agenda is the application for the exempt permit for Holy Redeemer Church for August nineteenth, two thousand. Also a application for exempt permit for Holy Redeemer Church for September twenty-sixth, twenty twenty. Previous item was also twenty twenty. Consider the approval of a temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Holy Redeemer Church for August nineteenth, twenty twenty. Consider the approval of temporary on-sale intoxicating liquor license for Marshall Area Chamber of Commerce for July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty. Consider the rat, the ratification of the resolution approving the sale of city-owned property to Marshall Municipal Utilities. And then finally, consider the approval of the bills and the project payments. So is there any item on the consent agenda any member of the council wants removed for purposes of separate discussion?
Mr. Mayor, number seven, please.
Any other item? If not, is there a motion to approve the remaining items on the consent?
No move. Second.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Steve. Discussion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes?
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Move then to agenda item number seven, which is the introduction of the ordinance amendment to permit some slaughtering of animals in butcher shops in the general business district and industrial district, and permit landscaping businesses in, in the general industrial district, and call for a hearing. Russ, you had a question on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know if any of the other council members received calls or people questioning, but I received about three or four calls regarding the quote-unquote slaughtering of animals. And everybody I talked to said that they didn't want slaughtering, but once I explained the situation that it was going to be limited, and what I thought it was probably similar to what we used to have with the butcher block in town, everybody was fine with it. So I just bring it up for clarification to the public that we're not opening up a, a new slaughtering house by any means. Like, at one point, we used to have Marshall Meat Cell on Highway fifty-nine. So I think what the intent of the, of the ordinance, the way it's going to read is, and I love that word, limited slaughtering. So I think I'm okay with it, but I just bring it up for informational purposes for the public. Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I saw a move.
Second.
Motion by Craig, seconded by John. Discussion?
Who's actually seconded by Russ?
Okay, sorry about that. John, you must have moved because your, your box lit up there. So any other, any discussion on that motion? If not, Kyle, will you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes?
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer. John De Kramer. Russ LaBatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
The motion, the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda item number fourteen, the City Hall Committee Report. Sharon, do you want to start with this? And then I know Scott Vandermellen is on, on the line, as well as the three members from the council that are the City Hall Committee. Sharon?
Right. For better than a week, the staff and City Hall Committee has been discussing the mainstay wall that is currently left in place, and then also what I call the south, the south portion of the city hall that has remained its cinder block if you, if you go past Main Street on City Hall right now. Last week, the chairman of the committee, Councilmember Lozinski, was on site to, to look at the condition of, of both walls. The mainstay, and I'm going to pause here and Ray and Councilmember Lozinski can explain a little bit better. But we have come to the conclusion on mainstay, we may not want to do a complete demo of that wall as originally proposed. And then it ties into the roof, and we also have to discuss foundation. And with City Hall on that south side, we did not realize, but it, only because of the hotel demolition, the, the portion of City Hall that's nearer to Main Street is seven inches more narrow than the alley side, so it's not square. And the cost and complexity of building walls by the subcontractor may be more expensive than just knocking down the wall and starting all over on that particular side. So today, we did have a follow-up City Hall Committee to talk about what kind of wall will we put on mainstay. And also, was there some feelings about taking down the south side of City Hall to, to accommodate the building of a new wall with the, with the cost to be nearly, nearly the same, if, if not better. So this is really more of an update by the building inspector, Scott Vandermellen, who's done some work on the contractors in City Hall Committee. We're still within the, well within the limits of the change order policy that was adopted by council. But good to just inform and update as it's a very visible project and you may get questions. So I may just turn it over to Ray, and he can give, give some insight into this. And, and maybe Ray, for everyone else, maybe instruct Kyle what, what area you're looking at, and he can pull up the photos.
Thank you, Sharon. Thank you, council members and, and mayor. I'm Scott Vandermellen, and we've been sort of taking over what Glenn Olson, I don't know if it's hard to hear here, but a little clearer. But with the demo, we found, we've got, basically got two issues. One being the mainstay wall, and then the City Hall wall. So Kyle, if you'll go to the photo that says C one eleven in your packets, I, I put together a number of things, so it's probably not in the order of, of the way I'm looking at it. So it's a, it's an architectural drawing by Ash Company. So yeah, just keep scrolling. Some point in here, you should, it's probably the last one. Keep going down to the bottom. One more, I believe. Okay, looking at this drawing, as, as you can see, the gray area is actually City Hall. The green line is the meeting wall between City Hall and the Marshall Hotel. Well, the original scope of the project was to demo, demo the entire foundation and perimeter floors, slabs, and whatnot. But after the demo progressed through the entire building, it was determined that the structure of mainstay is actually bearing on the old hotel wall. So by demoing that wall and foundation, we would have jeopardized the integrity of the mainstay wall. Okay? So after further review, what we determined is that it's best to leave that wall as is and construct a new footing and foundation, bring that up approximately a foot above finished grade, then build another wall from there up, two feet above the mainstay roof line, and tie the roof structure and the existing wall together so that that wall doesn't shift one way or the other. So that, that design still needs to be made. But until then, what we need to do is actually support that wall until we actually get the footings and foundation in. So in the event that we get a wind or something, that we don't compromise that wall a little bit. So in conjunction with that, you go up one slide, Kyle. Before we go, go back one, please. Also, if you look on the red line in the back, okay, you'll see Main Street is on the bottom side, and then where that arrow points down on the red, that's the mainstay wall. From, from the back of the red to the alleyway, and then across the back to the alleyway, we decided that it would be best just to knock that foundation down two feet and leave that remaining foundation in, because there's no reason to, uh, put additional cost for the removal if that's becoming a parking lot, or whatever you decided to do with that area there. So the blue would indicate that the walls can be knocked down two feet from original grade. The red would indicate that the full height foundation and footing would be intact, that will not be removed along with the structural wall of mainstay. That's, that's a button. The green line indicates that that wall, footing and foundation will be removed from the front approximately back to twenty, thirty feet from the back corner, because that back area, there's a shaft wall and all concrete, so that will stay. Now go up one slide, if you would, Kyle, please. Okay, on here, what we found is that the City Hall is out of square. So from the back of the building to the front, it's seven inches out of square. So all the soft work, all your hallways and everything would taper accordingly on the design. So what the proposal was here is that after talking with the contractors and whatnot, what is going to be the most cost-effective way of doing it? And it's sort of the proposal that we go in and remove all that CMU wall that's on, on the second floor and up where the old stairwell is. Thus, we would eliminate additional labor, framing material, structural support and so forth. So what we do is we take out that old wall in there, and then those, we gain probably about a foot and a half of space in those office areas to make everything straight. And then any additional windows or doorways want to have extension jams that would be two feet thick. So the new wall that's designed on the original bid would go from a new footing and foundation all the way up to the parapet of the roof. And then we would just infill the floor from there to the new wall. And that way, you could get better insulation. You don't have to worry about fireproofing, fire damp, or any fire going up through those chase walls. And then you can keep all your corridors and everything straight. So if you look on some of your additional photos there, if you just want to flip through, Kyle, just go up one or two. See what else we have up on here. We, that's just, keep going up. What I wanted to show you is on here, okay, if you can upright that, if you would, please. There, there you should be able to see a partial wall, how it's out of wax. So the actual bar joist of the existing City Hall actually protrudes out into, and was built into the Marshall Hotel, so you cannot get a straight line. And so the reasoning is, is that we would come out approximately about a foot off of that wall or whatever, and there's, it's been designed on PR four to put a new footing foundation from there all the way up to the top, and then just infill those floors over the new wall. That's what the proposal is on that. So if you go That's what the proposal is on that. So, uh, if you go back a couple of photos, I just wanted to show you a couple of things on, okay. Do you upright that please? That would be the areas of the block that would be demoed. And then the lower area is the area of the foundation that will be removed according to the original contract. But the upper portion here would be, uh, on a, on a different contract. So, uh, go up another one if you would, Kyle, please. Upright that. Okay. What that is, is the, how the existing wall of mainstay is tied into, uh, the old Marshall Hotel. So right now we've got some stability that is holding that standalone wall. So it can't move back and forth. But what the structural engineer is telling us is that before we do any backfilling to do the vibration and so forth, they would like to see that footing and foundation built all the way up and then erect that wall up and then tie the new wall and that parapet back in so that there is no flex into that wall before we start backfilling. Go up again, Kyle, please. Here's just the upper portion. They've actually laid plywood down on the roof here. So that's just showing you how high the parapet walls are on the outside edge. Okay, go up another one. Now, if you upright that, okay, so this is the mainstay wall. So what if, what we're doing is, is that red line is going to indicate the actual structural walls of mainstay. So from that red line up, that parapet is being removed. And then from that vertical red line back, that wing wall that's from the back of, uh, mainstay back is going to be demo. So you can think from the red line south is the actual wall of mainstay. So the scope is to put a new wall beside that and then incorporate their roof line and this wall into the other ones to keep that wall, uh, intact without getting into the structural integrity of mainstay. Go up ahead one. That's just, uh, just showing some of the demo areas. Go up another one. And then, but that's pretty much the scope right now. So, uh, as far as where we're sitting. So the big thing now is that we need to somehow get something rolling on the mainstay wall to get that wall erected. And, uh, so we can backfill that. So right now the entire debris of the basement has been removed. So right now Linco has been advised to hold off on any, any backfilling until we, uh, can get this wall rectified here for mainstay. So in the meantime, once they get the foundation out on the City Hall side, they will actually start that footing and foundation and bring that up. So right now we're just looking for some guidance on, on the mainstay portion. So along with this demo, there has been a revision or a change order or according to Linco on, a reimbursement on, for the demolition that has not, uh, that will not be completed. So, uh, I think Scott has some information and we can provide that later. It might even be in your packet. But there will be some, uh, credit towards that, uh, foundation that is not being removed. So, I guess with that, I guess I would ask if there's any questions.
Hey, thank you, Ray. Questions or other input from the committee?
Um, I'll add some input here. As we get into this and I know cost comes up and Steve, you brought up budgets before. Um, taking and I visited with a local contractor, there's Bobby Sanaban, which, which has done this for a long time. And him and I chatted, if we knock out and express this in more simple terms, we probably will either be net neutral or it might even be a cost savings to remove that block wall and just build that one wall and straighten this building out. And I believe Sharon, you had sent something out with what we're saving. And I know the City Hall is separate from the hotel. So I just want to clarify, mainstay is separate from the City Hall remodel. But the cost savings from what we're not demoing out should virtually cover the cost of removing that block out of City Hall and actually straighten that out and making it a more useful um, side of the City Hall there. Am I correct? In that email I read from you, Sharon?
That's correct. I, I did have council member LaBatt did bring up as part of that. We may have to have a structural engineer work done on the mainstay. So there might be some costs there. I don't know how much. It shouldn't be a lot, but, um, but you're correct. The, the one, both walls may counterbalance each other in terms of cost, except for, um, use of a structural engineer.
And as people ask, you know, because we'll be asked by folks out in the public, why didn't we know this? We have to remember to remind them, we never intended to remove this hotel when this project started. By removing this hotel, we've opened up a new can of worms, which we need to deal with now. And that's kind of where this has fallen into is by removing that hotel, we expose stuff. We can actually end up making our building better at a very low cost compared to now instead of tearing the hotel down in four years.
Okay, any other input from or questions from the council? The direction, uh, Ray, that you're looking for is affirmation of the continuing with plan to stabilize the exposed wall on the mainstay building.
I think there needs to be some direction as far as we, we need to get somebody to stabilize until we get something permanently in there. And then we need to come up with a design and the fact is who's going to design it and then, uh, who, who's going to construct that portion. So I guess that's, that's where the building committee or whoever's involved with that will have to give some direction, uh, to see with that portion of it.
Mr. Mayor and along those lines, you know, I know this isn't an action item. I really appreciate all the work that, that staff and, and the contractor and, and the architects and, and our committee have done. And, um, you know, I think that there's a lot of things going on here and I appreciate the, the, all of the due diligence that's being done with this. And I, I really support the, the work of the group moving forward.
Ray, correct me too. I think you're also looking for direction on what to do with that City Hall wall, which I would recommend that, that we, and I know it's not an action item, but I would just recommend that we remove that and straighten that out and just build one six inch exterior wall. Am I correct in saying that?
Correct. They, uh, talked with the contractors. They feel by demoing that CMU wall is going to be more cost effective because now you don't have the added materials, you don't have the added labor, you don't have to go around corners and nooks, which is more time consuming. By taking that out, you can now just use that new one-time wall all the way through and not have to create any additional, uh, soffits or, or structural support in place inside. So it's going to be more cost effective. So it'll probably be a reduction after talking to Bobby and, and I think you met with him as well, that it might be cheaper just to blow that out than to build it with those CMU walls in there.
And if I remember correctly from our meeting this morning, I believe the committee supports that. I know John and Russ, you were both there. So you can affirm that, but I believe we as a committee support that. And I think we're just looking for the council just to give their blessing on that for Ray.
Was there any objection from that from the council? Because that could, it really doesn't take council action. But I think what the committee is looking for, what staff are looking for is if there's any, um, disagreement with, uh, what is being proposed.
Mayor, may I jump in and add one item?
Go ahead.
Uh, this is Jason Anderson. Uh, I think one other item that Ray was bringing up was just an understanding that uh, staff will need to engage the services of a structural engineer to do a, uh, design, a brief design or small design for that mainstay wall and proceed forward with getting quotes for some work over there. Is that correct, Ray?
Correct. We could, we could, if we wanted to, uh, the stability of that wall has to be done by a, a demo engineer. So what we could do is we've had that demo engineer, uh, provide all the bracing for City Hall. So we could utilize that same contractor if you opt to, to support that, you know, as a temporary issue until that wall is constructed. So.
So I think in, in understanding and concurrence from the council, that staff needs to engage in these services and keep this moving forward. Due to the nature of that mainstay wall being slightly unstable potentially, we want to try to follow up on that.
This is John DeCramer, just like to add in there that, uh, uh, I think that's pretty, you know, from the committee meeting this morning, pretty much all in agreement that, uh, this is the right way to go. Uh, I know our expectations, uh, uh, you know, we have a lot of, uh, high expectations and a lot of faith in our engineering department. But, uh, you know, if we need to hire somebody or bring in a structural engineer, uh, we need to do this right and get the, uh, the foundation right. So, uh, I think we need to just proceed on as we discussed in the committee meeting this morning. And, uh, you know, do what we need to do to know that we have the proper plans for the foundation.
Mr. Mayor, I would, I would echo, I would echo what Councilman DeCramer said. And the only addition was that, and I think we were adamant about that this morning, that we keep in direct communication with the owners of the mainstay cafe and let them know what we plan on doing and, and get their input as well. So let them know that we're not going to forget about them. So.
And Russ?
I just wanted to add that, uh, I was bumped off the, uh, meeting three times on internet connection. So I said, uh, heck, when I came out here, so it looked like we were under our set number. So it looked like a good chance to get in.
And Russ, in, in regards to your comment, Russ, I did talk to, uh, Mr. Mueller this afternoon and updated on what the current status is. And I said, once we get some more information back on the design that, uh, we could provide that to him once we receive that. So he is updated as of what you have received tonight.
Great, thank you, Ray.
So to, um, kind of solidify all of this discussion, bring this together, the, uh, we may want a motion, even though this was an information item, we may want a motion to affirm the staff recommendation to remove the sin, remaining cinder block wall I, on the existing City Hall and proceed with, um, the installation of a straight wall that would correct the offset. And to, um, affirm the authorization of the, uh, engagement of professional services for the design of the new structure that will stable, stabilize and, um, supplement the wall on mainstay.
I'll make that a motion.
Motion by Jim, seconded by Russ. Discussion?
Uh, this is a council member Bearcooler. Uh, originally this started out as a non-action item and now it's turned into an action item. I, I'd like to, I mean, they've thrown out various options here, different ways we could proceed. I'd like to have more information, more cost estimates. What are the additional costs? What are the cost savings? Before I, I would approve anything like this.
I believe Jim, the, your motion was the, um, the authorization to, um, obtain those um, cost estimates and those services for professional services. And the one item that we, the one item, go ahead.
I said the motion is, is to let Ray, you know, as Ray talks about this, because this does fall within the budget or to the, the, um, city's change order policy. And the change order, I know the information we have, there is, there could be some extra cost. But if we wait two weeks, there's going to be a lot more extra cost because our contractors are going to get upset and they will disappear. Because they can't sit for two, three, four weeks. And we have to have faith in our staff at this point that they're making the best decisions. And it does fall within our change order policy. I think we're just making a motion to, to affirm to them to go ahead and do that. So they're comfortable doing that without being second guessed.
Can I, can I add some?
Uh, Sharon has something to add.
I just wanted to add that, you know, originally part of this discussion was to make decisions so that we could keep Linco on site so that they wouldn't have to come back, do the backfill, additional demo at a different time. And so, you know, some of these decisions, this is why the council adopted a change order policy so that decisions could be made in the field. If you have to come back and, and get council decision, it can, it can actually add to the cost and delay it since that time. And again, that things change minute by minute. There's been some additional interaction with another contractor and Linco, uh, has decided not to do some of the demo. And I also just want to add that, you know, the original intent is to bring forward the information was to just bring awareness to the council that you may see additional demo in City Hall that you didn't originally plan for, which is the demo of that, of that wall. And that, uh, on the mainstay side, you know, there's, there's going to be some work there and less demo than maybe we originally thought. So it really was just intending to give awareness. As you may get approached by the public on questions about City Hall, since it's front and center on a, uh, amongst many, uh, residents. Doesn't hurt to affirm what City Hall Committee recommended this morning, which is essentially the, the, um, the mini and repetitive statements that have been made by staff and the, and City Hall committees as well. So really just to bring full awareness, doesn't hurt to affirm. But there are decisions that are made in the field. We try to do our best and bring in whenever we can council members. So that's all.
Thank you, Sharon. Another discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote on that motion. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns?
Yes.
Craig Schaefer?
Yes.
Stephen Meister?
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler?
No.
John DeCramer?
Yes.
Russ LaBatt?
Yes.
Jim Wazinski?
Yes.
The motion does pass. Uh, once again, thank you, uh, all the staff that have been working on this and as well as the committee. We moved into Agenda I have number fifteen, consider the request of Marshall Public Schools for funding assistance, uh, for the relocation of the shared use path. Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, prior to approving project plans for the new elementary school on Southview Drive, a traffic impact study was completed by SEH, engineering firm SEH, to review possible traffic impacts to the adjacent streets. The predominant, a predominant recommendation of the study and probably the predominant recommendation was to re-stripe Southview Drive from a two-lane street with parking on both sides to a continuous two-way left turn lane down the center with parking allowed on the south side only. That recommendation would require the removal of the painted on street bike trail on Southview Drive. And due to that, uh, recommendation, city staff recommended to Marshall Public Schools to accommodate a widened sidewalk, a shared use path, eight foot in width to allow for the shared use between bikes and pedestrians off-street. Marshall Public Schools did include that in their project. In their original project scope, they included the addition of, uh, I think it was four feet of sidewalk width to the existing sidewalk that's in place. That existing sidewalk runs five feet behind the curb and parallel to the curb on the north side. Uh, since that time, school, uh, Marshall Public School staff has reached out to city staff to discuss uh, the alignment of that path and the cost of that path. The school staff and maintenance staff and, and contractor believe that it may be advantageous to move the trail further to the north and further away from the street. From a constructability standpoint, adding width to an existing sidewalk and keeping it together is, uh, is a difficult thing to, to do. And it's easier just to put it in a different path and maybe better for longevity of the surface, the pavement surface. And maintenance staff from the school district had concerns with snow removal with the path being so close to the street. This particular road and section of town experiences quite a bit of drifting on the road. So when the clouds come through, they do deposit quite a bit of snow on the sidewalk network. And school staff has indicated that they really don't look forward to moving all that snow on a wider path. And with more use of the sidewalk in this area with the new school, they're a little concerned about it. Um, so that being said, the drawing that you see there that was included in your packet shows the new alignment of the walk where you can see that it bent behind the trees and then comes up to the, uh, closer to the street at each driveway crossing, but then continues to go further away from the street again. With exception to those areas where it crosses the driveways, the trails. the trail is either is 11 feet from behind the curb or further away from the curb. So the school district and city staff tends to agree that this would provide maybe a little better, safer, nicer shared use path surface. So to help facilitate the cost of moving this, the school district is asking the city to participate in the amount of $37,051, which would be an even split of the cost to pave that trail as provided by their contractor. Now, I understand that from the city perspective, the general fund budget is tight and it's always tight and it's hard to find room for these types of things. But, you know, when we as city staff review this project, we do feel that the city wastewater department actually should be contributing some funds to this project. So I think a lot of us know already that sanitary sewer was rerouted to go around the school building. Because where the building sits today, it sits on top of a 15-inch.
Losing you. Yeah, Jason, your, your voice is fading out, so.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Much better.
Much better.
Yeah.
Okay, I apologize for that. I think, I think at times I'm looking up at the screen to see the drawing and I should be talking right at the mic. So so what I was saying was, you know, when city staff reviews this project, we believe that the wastewater department should actually be contributing dollars to the school project. I think a lot of us know and understand that sanitary sewer was rerouted around the school due to the placement of the school being right on top of the 15-inch sanitary sewer main. Now, we agree that and city staff believes that that should be the school district's cost. But on the southwest portion of the project, there was about 300 feet of 10-inch sanitary sewer and some removal of manholes and a vault and valving area that we believe the city wastewater department should participate in the cost of. It's a little bit outside of the realm of what the school districts would have to pay for by our estimation. And my cost estimate for the cost of the work is actually quite close to what they're asking for. So it would be staff's recommendation for the wastewater department to kick in $37,500 to Marshall Public Schools for sanitary sewer replacement work that was completed by the school district on this project. And in per conversations with finance, we believe that the wastewater treatment plant reserves could cover this cost.
Thank you, Jason. And I'll note for the record, it looks like school board member Sarah Runcie has also joined the conversation or joined the meeting.
The. Mayor, I should also note that Dion Karen is also president of Marshall Public Schools.
Okay, thank you, Jason. Two quick questions I would have, and Kyle, if you could put the map back up or the. So one other benefit from the city was on the north area where the trunk sewer line access was previously, there was a manhole monitoring that was quite a ways up onto the school district property and that was eliminated. So that, that actually is a benefit to the city. The, in that same area, Jason, is the sidewalk being relocated or the shared use path away from the Southview Drive? And I'm talking on that north part, the current area that's kind of outside of the construction area?
Yes.
So my only question there is that that's a, it's kind of a low swampy area. I don't know if there's, you know, some of the excess fill is going to be relocated there. Maybe that's a question for Dion rather than you, Jason, so.
Yeah, I think that'd be a question for Marshall Public Schools if Dion wanted to try to address that.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, the, there was actually some dirt put over in that area when they were finishing it. That low-lying area to hopefully have some better drainage and prevent that from holding water.
Okay. Still looks low, low. So open it up for, or Sarah, do you have anything you wanted to add before we open up for questions?
No, I think what we're really seeking, and I just wanted to kind of back up on a personal note. You know, I ran for the school board in part because I was really excited about the prospect of getting, hopefully getting this new building built and the benefit that I saw to our community. And I really was hoping to build on these community-school partnerships. I had envisioned, and Dion and I have talked about this a lot, you know, with the YMCA, the library, the middle school now, the intermediate elementary school, the track, hopefully some playground equipment. To have these better trails, safer trails, safer traffic patterns is going to be a benefit to the whole community. And really, I think, be a highlight for the whole city of Marshall to have that all together. So it's really my hope that the city shares that and can find somehow some way to support this project.
Okay, so open up for any general questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Steve.
So I agree with Ms. Runcie, the, I think this is a community benefit. The only question I have, and it's unknown because I bet nobody thought about it, but the drifting that previously occurred, that's because that was a big wide open field. And now we're going to have a building there. And so that very well may alter the drifting pattern significantly. So we may not even have the drifting issues. We'll see. But I'm in favor of this.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman LaBatt, oops, sorry, interrupting someone?
Go ahead.
I would agree with with Councilman Meister. You know, I lived on Southview Drive for a good number of years. In fact, my oldest daughter was born there and I walked home from the hospital on drifts that were probably six to 10 feet high on Southview Drive. I'm not sure, I agree with Steve. I think the building being there is going to cut down on some of the snow drifting that comes across that field. I'm not sure about the moving of the snow. I don't, I still think it's going to have to have happen on that east end. I don't think, no matter what you do, if you put a 11-foot sidewalk or a six-foot sidewalk there, I think your drifting is going to be there. I just have trouble supporting something here. I'm in, I'm in support of working with the school, but didn't we think about this prior to the planning of the school? I mean, we knew these things were going to happen and we knew this location, Southview Drive. Bob, you've lived in that area for a good number of years. You know, Southview Drive is notoriously full of snow all winter long. So I just think, I don't know about it. So that's just my thoughts.
Okay, other input?
Councilmember Bear Coler here. I talked to Jason about this this afternoon and, and you know, it's my opinion that if, if these costs are incurred because of the construction of the new school, then they should be, those costs should be borne by the school district. You know, the sidewalk situation, we wouldn't be changing the sidewalk if it wasn't for the construction of the, of the new school. So I don't see where the, the school, the city should be paying for the change in the sidewalks. On the other hand, with regard to the sewage pipes, the sanitary sewer pipes, the question then is, does the city get a, what is it, a $37,000 benefit from this? And if it's benefiting the city by $37,000, then the city should pay for a benefit that they're receiving. So it all depends on whether it's, it's going to benefit the city or not. And if it's not going to benefit the city and only benefit the school district, then the city, the school district should be paying for it.
I know, Jason, you and I had a discussion quite some time ago about the sanitary sewer system and that, that is the relief system for that area south there, including the other side of Highway 23. That all comes up there. And basically, by doing what was done, it eliminated a kind of a redundant stretch that went farther up into the school property, nearly up to the parking lot, and then re-entered the sewer main that then goes down to the trunk sewer line. So that is a benefit, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Sharon had some input and then I'll turn to you, Craig.
I don't know if this gets to Councilmember Bear Coler's point, but we don't have to pay for the sidewalk. We could just have the school district invoice us for the sewer work at $37,000. It would be, the net result would be the same. I mean, if that's, because we are getting a benefit from that, so they could just invoice us instead of us cautioning on the sidewalk.
I do think, though, it's a good idea to move the sidewalk farther away from the, the traffic pattern, both from safety as well as, you know, just the environmental use of a wide, not only sidewalk, but a path that will have bicycles on it and other things. Craig, do you have a point?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I believe that we did actually talk about that, that exact item earlier when we were looking at the original traffic studies when the proposition of the school proposal first came out and we had meetings to talk about the, the traffic movement. And I know a lot of that discussion was actually related to how that path interfaces with, when it gets up on the Hy-Vee site. But I know we did talk about the proximity of that to the traffic on Southview. And with the current traffic conditions and then the changes that we anticipated with the school, I know we did discuss more about that spatial separation. And it was, I think, brought up more by the public in a couple of those public information meetings.
Okay, other input, other discussion?
I have some input on this. And Jason or Bob, you can help me with. Normally, when we do a large redevelopment in areas such as we're doing here, is it not? I believe it's not uncommon for cities to cost share in some of the public infrastructure, which is what we're doing here. And I think it's also a safety issue in this changing this infrastructure. If we are moving those middle school kids off of Saratoga Street, as that's been very busy in the morning. So I think that's also a plus to our citizens here in Marshall, that we're improving our city. And $37,000 is a small cost to us, to the school district, to keep a kid from getting hit by a car.
Other input?
Mr. Mayor, just to address Councilman Bear Coler's concern, as City Administrator Hanson said, we've, we're getting a benefit from that sewer being moved. And the, the school could just invoice us, I agree. But this is a win-win situation. You know, it's nice to have a shared use path instead of just a sidewalk. It'll be nice and wide. You'll get the bikes off and that joins the bike path up on the west side there and makes it just more friendly for a bicycle-friendly city. So having, living in this very area, you know, the sidewalk on that particular route has never historically been really overly cleaned all winter, probably because of the volume of snow. I anticipate that they'll do a much better job of cleaning that. But I really like the idea of a shared use path. And so, again, it's a win-win. City gets the invoice from the school for $37,000 or we just share the cost on this sidewalk move and call it, call it good. I think it's a win-win and I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Any other input?
I have a question for Jason here. We talked earlier today about the idea of bicycles and pedestrians sharing a sidewalk. And you, I think you mentioned something about normally that's not done where bicycles and people walking along the sidewalk share the same sidewalk. Would you like to discuss that a few minutes here?
Sure, I think that it's a really good question for our police chief. But I'm quite certain that in general, on a typical sidewalk, you know, bikes are not supposed to be there by statutes. And I believe that's true. But, you know, in the event that we make these wider paths, these shared use paths and trails, they're meant for both bikes and pedestrians. And so there's absolutely no problem with that. And this is something that, you know, we really support. And I think we'll work with the school district in years to come to, to get some more path put in on the east side of the school property here to link up by C Street. So by grant, we'll try to find a grant for that, so. You know, I think this is.
Jason, this would be, this would be consistent with the shared use path that's along Saratoga Street that's wide enough to accommodate both bicycles and it's made for that and people, as well as the shared use path that's along Windstar Street on the south side from Saratoga over to Highway 59.
I think. Absolutely, correct.
And then whether intentional or not, the sidewalks on Main Street typically, if you walk those, especially in the evening, are always shared use. The bikes don't use Main Street, they use the sidewalks.
One, one last comment here. As I mentioned before, if the city is receiving a $37,000 benefit because of the sanitary sewer lines, I'm, I'm more than willing to have the city pay for that. If the city does agree to pay the $37,000 here for that, then it's understood then that the school district is going to put in or pay for the increased cost of the sidewalks and, and do it the way that's planned. Is that the correct understanding?
That, that's my understanding, that the school wants to install the path as shown on this plan. And they've been asking us for our cost contribution as we outlined. And city staff just identified, and we've been, we've kind of been looking at this for a while, to be honest, that we should really be paying for this portion of this sewer. So when Marshall Public Schools reached out, probably two months ago, a month and a half ago, we just thought it was the best time to come forward and say, look, wastewater needs to pay for this portion. And that also helps the school district get the money that they're looking for.
Okay. Any other input? Or are we ready for a motion?
Move to approve sharing the cost with the school district.
Motion by Steve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Jim. Discussion?
So just a quick question. So the motion is that we're going to pay $37,051, that's our share of the cost. And it would be, and it would be for the sanitary sewer lines. And the school will go ahead and pay for the full cost of the construction of the sidewalks.
I think the sanitary sewer line was a side piece of information that was part of our cost justification. But the motion is actually to contribute our share for the construction of the shared use path. Right, Steve?
Correct.
Other discussion on the motion?
So the motion actually is that we're going to be helping to pay for the sidewalk then?
That is correct. In lieu of getting billed for the sanitary sewer.
So, and so, Ray, we're paying for the sanitary sewer.
Well, by, by default, Glenn, I'm saying we are paying half of the sidewalk instead of getting billed for the sanitary sewer. So however you want to justify it in a CPA type of thing, that's fine. But the reality is we're paying for half the sidewalk and not paying for the sewer.
Okay, okay, other discussion on the motion? One item, and this goes back to Sarah's original point about the, the value of partnerships and working together. I think it was Jason that mentioned the, in the future, there would be an opportunity if there would be some grant funding that would be available or some other funding source similar to what we've done some other bike paths on, where we've identified some other funding sources that are not part of our general levy, but to connect the, on the east side of the school property to connect this shared use bike path with the shared use trail that is near the area or goes along Tiger, Tiger Pond, Tiger Lake, near the library. And then where's that pond continues up to Memorial, or that trail continues up to Memorial Park going by the dog park. So that would be a nice connection to consider at some point in the future when there is some opportunity for funding. Other discussion on the motion?
One, one last question. You've indicated on Saratoga that there is sharing of the, with bicycles and pedestrians on the sidewalk there. Have we ever had any problems with that, concerns raised by citizens?
You know, Glenn, I have not heard any and I have both walked and biked on there and I haven't seen any issues, but so.
There's bicycles that use the sidewalks all over the city, it's usually kids. And if you're walking, you just gently, gently remind the kids to get off the sidewalk.
Oh, and the bike paths and, and walking paths out on the levees are all shared use. And I mean, my wife and I both bike and walk on them. And I mean, it, it happens. And it's, it's like Dr. or Councilman Meister is, is alluding to and.
And it's, it's like Dr. or Councilman Meister is, is alluding to and, and Mayor Burns is that it's all about, you know, civic behaviors, you know, you can't, we can't regulate out of personal behaviors, but we can certainly coach them.
I was just in comment that there's shared use paths all over the state. And I think one of the busiest shared use paths in the states is the Duluth Lake Walk. And that's not just, that's bikes, rollerbladers, walkers, runners. So it's very common throughout our state to do that.
Yes, Twin Cities, all the bike paths are shared use paths in the cities.
Okay, any other, go ahead, Glenn.
The, the only concern I have is that I have, a lot of those paths are not necessarily right by a school. We're going to have a lot of traffic by the school and, uh, uh, that would be my concern. I, I'll support this motion, but, you know, I just want to make sure that, um, because it's located by a school, there's going to be a lot of students walking and riding bikes, that it's not going to be a problem.
They already do that, Glenn, on the other side.
Any other, uh, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes?
Craig Schaefer.
Most definitely, yes.
Steve Meister.
Absolutely, yes.
Glenn Bearcollar. Glenn?
Yes.
John De Kramer?
Yes.
Russ Lebatt?
No.
Jim Lozinski?
Yes.
And the motion does pass. Thank you, uh, Dionne and Sarah for joining our meeting. You're welcome to stay for the rest of our meeting, but we understand if you sign off too, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
We'll move to agenda number sixteen, the request for a variance, variance adjustment permit for Charles and Jolene Steffel, one oh nine East Redwood Street. This was considered by the planning commission and is recommending its approval by the council. Uh, Ilya Gutman, uh, will present this. Ilya?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Council. Uh, Kyle, can I have the aerial photo, please? So, uh, this is East Duluth Street and the house in question is, you can see that it's a lighter house with the white fence around. So, uh, you can see the garage there, which is, uh, uh, really located about one foot away from the property line. And the garage is in pretty bad shape. So the owner wants to take it down and rebuild it on the same, uh, spot, on the same slab, because there is a concrete slab there. As soon as, in theory, as soon as the garage is taken down, the, uh, the ordinance takes, uh, over and, uh, the requirements for the side yard kicks in. However, in this case, uh, as you can see that, uh, first of all, the slab is already there. And second, you can see that the, on the other side of the property line, there is another garage, which is very close to the property line. So, uh, the recommendation in this case is to approve it because it's kind of, uh, the condition beyond the control. And, uh, it won't change the character of the building. So the recommendation is to approve it. And, uh, with the condition that it's not closer to the property line than, than the existing garage. And it went through the planning commission and the recommendation was to approve it.
Hey, thank you, Ilya. Questions for Ilya?
Move to approve.
Second. Motion by Steve, seconded by Craig. Discussion? If not, uh, Kyle, would you take the vote? Kyle, are you still on?
Yep, sorry, I get things, uh, Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yeah.
Glenn Bearcollar.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
I abstain, I own the house next door.
The motion does pass. We'll note the abstention. The, uh, we'll move then to agenda number seventeen, the request for a map amendment, amendment for rezoning. James R. Swenson and Tia Swenson, location one eleven, uh, Canoga Park Drive. This, of course, was discussed at our, our last meeting also. Jason or Ilya?
Thank you, Mayor Council, we'll take it. Uh, Kyle, can I have an aerial photo for us? So, this is the aerial photo of this thing, uh, shows you there are three empty lots there between the building. There's a computer man on the north and the duplex on the south. The two empty lots right now are zoned business, general business B three. And, uh, uh, lot, which is, uh, outlined in blue here, is zoned, uh, uh, R two. So the owner of all those three lots, uh, wants to use them for parking. And while parking is allowed and permitted use on the business district, it's not, of course, in the residential district. So the owner, uh, has to rezone this area, uh, to the same general business B three. Can we go to the, uh, rezoning map, please? So, uh, uh, obviously, uh, the adjacent lots already zoned, uh, the general business. So, uh, the, the staff doesn't see any problem with, uh, rezoning this lot to the same general business, zoning districts. So it went through the planning commission, it was public hearing, it was introduced in the last meeting where the council saw the recommendations to rezon.
Okay. Questions on this?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Jim, seconded by, uh, Craig. Discussion? Steve, did you have something?
I did. I see Jim sitting behind you there. So Jim, uh, is there any feedback from the neighbors to that property on the south?
Yeah, if you could speak.
So we're gonna introduce Jim Swenson, the applicant.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember and Mayor. Uh, there has been a concern just, uh, based on the containers, uh, sitting there, but that they are going to definitely go away. And, uh, the sidewalk is going to be connected. So it's, you know, be clean and very usable, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the motion? If not, we'll move to a vote. Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yep.
Glenn Bearcollar.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number eighteen. This, uh, item was also introduced at the last council meeting. This is a request for a map amendment rezoning for Action Company LLC, location is twelve oh nine and twelve eleven West Main Street. Once again, Ilya.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So, uh, uh, you consider two lots here. Uh, it's, uh, close to the corner of Channel Parkway and, uh, uh, West Main Street. Can we go to the zoning map now? So the owner wants to rezone these two lots, uh, from general business, which they are right now, to general industrial, to be able to use them for the, uh, the proposed business landscaping business, which is not permitted in the, uh, the general business district. Uh, again, you can see that they're adjacent to the, uh, uh, general industrial district right now. Uh, so, and there is a industrial district across the street. So in this case, again, the recommendation, it went through the planning commission, was public, had a public hearing. And through the introduction, the council's recommendation is to approve rezoning.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by, who seconded it?
John.
Seconded by, by John. Discussion on that motion? If not, uh, Kyle, would you take the vote?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcollar.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Lebatt?
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
Motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number nineteen, which is the, uh, Tall Grass Liquor Annual Report. So Eric Luther, our manager of Tall Grass is online. I'll turn it to you, Eric. Unless. Eric?
Uh, Honorable Mayor and City Council members, um, you probably have the attached, um, uh, liquor operations annual report, um, for Tall Grass Liquor for two thousand nineteen. I'll just kind of briefly run through, um, we did the same last year. And, um, just going to highlight a few couple, a couple of different areas that I think are noted for this, uh, two thousand nineteen. And then also touch upon, um, our first half of the year for two thousand twenty. So as you can see on page three, the organizational structure has not changed, uh, for full-time, employees plus, um, eleven part-time, um, employees. Mission statement, I'd just like to highlight that. That's one of the basis of our operation here. Everything, um, that we do and all decisions are based on our mission. Um, and, um, which, um, is putting customers first and abiding by the laws. And, uh, profits reinvested back in the community, um, with reduced property tax levies and provides for special projects. Part two on page three, overall liquor operations, um, for sales for two thousand nineteen, five million, five hundred and forty-eight thousand, three sixty-four, with a net profit of five hundred eighty-eight thousand, two twenty-seven. Um, this was an increase of total sales by four hundred and forty-three thousand, eight fifty-one. And a net increase of profits of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine, which was, uh, compared to two thousand eighteen. You can see on page four, the graphs there that kind of show that, um, sales history and net profit history, um, and that. So, page five kind of goes through our product mix. Domestic beer and beer in general continues to lead the way of, um, the product mix of forty-six percent, along with spirits, wine, and then miscellaneous or general merchandise. Gross profit again, um, beer comes in about twenty-one percent gross profit. And that's balanced off by our wine, spirits, and miscellaneous, um, merchandise and general merchandise. There, so. Kind of see on page six, um, monthly sales, you can kind of see our trend for, um, our highest sales months, fall in the summer, May, June, July, and August. With December then also finishing out the year with a strong, um, sales month there. Trends, of course, uh, liquor, Canadian whiskeys and, and some of those things, vodka lead the way in this category. Domestic beer is our biggest seller. Um, craft beer is also, um, very, very popular at our store. And I think, um, customers seek that variety and customers seek, um, new products, which we offer quite a bit. The seltzer water category, um, you can kind of see that category has kind of taken over a little bit with our, um, on our rails and our refrigerated section, um, and has been growing in popularity. Um, we know, um, Grain Belt's making a seltzer now. I'm surprised Hams Beer has not made a seltzer yet. But, um, we'll see. Wine and, and value wines, box wines lead the way in that interest, in, in that way. And so wines continue to be a strong seller. We do, um, offer a great variety of wines, uh, Minnesota-made wines, and a good selection for Marshall in the wine category. Page seven, we've hosted several events in two thousand nineteen, um, very successful, very, um, interested, um, events that have, um, our committee members seeking these types of things here to kind of get, um, uh, uh, kind of a social plus also, um, being, be, being able to, taste products and things like that, that normally wouldn't, um, wouldn't have that opportunity to do. And that we did lots of taste testing at the store to promote new products and existing products. And that was also a given, customers a great opportunity to, uh, try things before they buy them or shop. That has kind of gotten away since March fifteenth with the COVID and, and those kinds of things. Those concerns there with congregating a people in the store and kind of hanging out and things like that. That's kind of gone away, that has gone away here, um, recently. Again, on page seven, the community service, um, again, we've supported lots of different, um, um, community types of events. Some of the things are near to our employees, um, and want to continue to support those, along with some of the, um, community projects with Memorial Park, uh, the Marshall Fire Department, and also our friends at SMSU, have done, um, some things there to help, um, their causes there. Accomplishments, we've continued to training, uh, training with our employees on wine, beer, and liquor. Attended the regional meetings, um, that the MMBA, the Minnesota Municipal Beverage Association has put on. And, uh, continued to enhance our customer shop, service and shopping experience with unique floor displays and just, um, in general, making our store look, um, great and providing a great wow factor for our customers. On the bottom of page seven, um, we have kind of a year-to-date, um, synopsis of where we stand compared to two thousand nineteen. And, uh, you can kind of see that has really, um, impacted sales with the last three months, customer count too, and average ticket count. Um, all those, um, financial indicators have, um, really gone through the roof. You can kind of see that on that lower graph there, um, starting March, April, May, June. Um, you look at those green bar graphs and compare that to the highest month we've had, which is December. You look at, um, May compared to December, and you can kind of see the growth that we've, um, experienced. And overall, general, generally, things have gone well. I think, um, again, um, we are, we are all in the same deal here with the department, other departments having to shift and pivot and, um, do different things, maybe and think outside the box. We're no different here. We've, um, again, our best interest is our customers and our employees, keeping them safe. Um, and, um, kind of working through it. We're all, we'll get through it, so. On page eight there, again, we look at, um, point eight there. We've seen sales, uh, spike recently. Um, as we look at the budget for two thousand twenty-one, we are, we're not taking those, that spike into consideration. But however, we are taking, um, an increase in two thousand twenty-one of a five percent, which is a little bit more. Um, but I think our, our consumer behavior is going to be changing with, um, and it's going to benefit our store, continue to benefit it. And so, um, I see our, our store, um, performing above average as we get into the future here. We, we've got a strong emphasis on gross profit. We're checking monthly reports to ensure we're on track. And, um, I think we're off to a good start for two thousand twenty. We've made some investments in our merchandising here this last year, and some of those things have come online. The fifty-mill freestanding merchandiser and a self-serve cooler, uh, for displaying wine, cold wine, single cans, bottles for purchasing. Uh, both investments, uh, we've seen add-on sales, uh, growth in these products. And consumers are picking those up in addition to their regular purchases. That in turns, uh, increases ticket averages, which include, increases gross profit. Uh, we're in the final stages of, uh, our POS operating, um, improvement with, uh, cloud-based system called Cloud Retailer and should have also category signs installed by hopefully the end of this month. Both investments will help delivery of our, uh, customer service experience at, at Tall Grass. One of the things that we've seen here the last couple of months has been the curbside, the, uh, the actual need and the calling, uh, for our customers to have curbside pickup or in-store pickup. One of the modules in our, uh, uh, cloud-based retailer that we'll upgrade to will have that, um, online capability of ordering ahead and picking it up, for in-store pickup or curbside pickup. Just a couple of different things there that we might want to look at for two thousand twenty-one. I feel that we've invested our money well, that we, um, looked at for two thousand twenty. And there's just a couple of different things to kind of look at with an electronic safe, uh, which replaces the old dial safe. That's probably been here fifty years. Um, and then also a new wall wrap that, um, is above the beer cooler that will kind of, that will match our existing category sign that will be installed, um, here. here later this month. And so that's what I've got here so far. I think things are going pretty good. And I I'm excited to see how the year finishes from a sales and profit standpoint. This will be a, this will be kind of a one off year and and I hope we can continue to capture customers that are seeking more of a experience that they can purchase their products and then go home or entertain with a smaller group at home. And I think that customers are are going to see it, we're going to see a change in how customers react here as we get into the future.
Thank you, Eric, and we do appreciate your leadership and your management. Questions for Eric?
I just have a few comments here and I brought up this issue in the past and I'm bringing it up again. Our city government is the biggest promoter of the sale of alcoholic beverages in the city of Marshall. Should city government be encouraging the consumption of alcoholic beverages? That's my question. Is that a proper role for city government? There's all kinds of costs in our society that are related to the consumption of alcoholic beverages. Underage consumption, drinking and driving alcoholism are some of those costs to our society. I know the city makes lots of money from the liquor store and and it's used for public purposes, you know, we we try and use it the best we can. But but the question I always have is, does the end justify the means? You know, we had about an eight percent increase here in sales. And increased sales is not always a good thing. It depends on what you're selling and how it's used by the consumer. And I'm just saying that because it's something to think about because, you know, we're looking at the benefits, all the money we're getting from the sale of alcoholic beverages. But there are costs to our society because of it and we need to consider that too. And, you know, I've had friends and relatives affected by alcohol abuse. And it's it's a serious problem in our nation. And it's something we should be thinking about.
And thank you, Glenn. Any other input or questions for Eric on his annual report?
Eric, I just want to thank you for how hard you've worked and the work that your staff does to accommodate the changes and I appreciate the establishment that you operate based on people's choices for, you know, what they choose for for consumption in their life and and I just appreciate the the good job that you've been doing out there and your staff has done. I'm I'm really proud of of the facility that the city has put together here. You know, compared to what we had before and the way that it's being operated, thank you.
Sharon, you had a comment you wanted to make?
I just wanted to comment as well, I know that it's been extremely busy for the liquor store staff and Eric and and your mean, all your employees, I know that in previous council meetings, council member Lozinski has talked a little bit about the front lines and how it includes store clerks and and people stocking shelves while our liquor store employees are are truly on the front lines early on. You know, we had to assess some risk in terms of coronavirus. And staff were willing to bring them up to to management and convey that and communicate it and we listened. And so I just, you know, really want to thank staff and again, your leadership, Eric, especially this time this year and what what you've been dealing with, so that's all I wanted to add, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, any other questions or input for Eric? If not, thank you, Eric. Oh, go ahead.
Yep, I think I I reflect and concur with Councilmember Schaefer's statements, I think that the liquor store has done just a fantastic job. You know, Councilmember Bear Coler's statements are are valid and you know, the other alternative would be to sell the liquor store and let private liquor stores in, that doesn't really solve the problem, although it takes it off the city's hands. And that's always something that could be entertained at some other time, but I think right now we have a municipal liquor store. I think that the numbers speak for themselves and I think under the tutelage and leadership of of Eric Luther, it's really, really done a great job and I for one really appreciate the hard work of Eric and his staff. So thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other input? If not, thank you, Eric.
Thanks.
We'll move then to the agenda number twenty, this is required by charter that we have have this on our agenda for consideration. This is the introduction of the ordinance that would amend the salaries and compensation of the mayor and council members, council persons. Comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to see a report either that Sheila or someone does. How do we compare with other cities are our size?
Councilman Robat, I can kind of answer that to start. Doing the drafting the ordinance and drafting the memo for the tonight's meeting. I did look around at our at some of our comparable sized cities, not all. But I can say with confidence that both the mayor and the council person salaries are in line. More so on the mayor's side, I did notice that the council person salaries however, are in line, however, on the are on the low end actually, so. I don't see a, it's up to the council, but I didn't see any reason to adjust the the increase for the council person salary in two thousand twenty or through two thousand twenty two, but that may be something the council may want to consider the next time this is brought forward.
Thank you, Kyle, I think that if you've got that just to share with council, just as an informational piece would be beneficial to all of us, thank you.
Absolutely.
So there, and Kyle, you can clarify this, but there is no action that's required if there is the intent to be for no change. Or the council introduce?
Correct, tonight's what's what's on the agenda item tonight is to introduce the ordinance. Which would be acted on at the next regular meeting to increase the annual salaries starting twenty twenty, January first, two thousand twenty one, to put the council in line with the general cost of or employee general wage increases through two thousand twenty one. So it bring the, it would bring the city council back in line with the rate increases the non union employees have had over the last three years. The last two years and through two thousand twenty one. If that makes sense.
Yep, yep, you explained it well, so the if the intent was not to make any change, there's no action needed, if the intent was to make the changes you have drafted, then your emotion would be in order to introduce and then the that would be considered then at our next regular council meeting, so. Input from the council, what what's the direction from the council?
So.
I'm sorry, Kyle, just a question. I know we missed a year here, I think. Do we only list one year, is that is that how it goes and because it says in the statute after a municipal or after the election? So what happens for twenty 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 two?
Yep.
Next year then or?
Nope, the way this would be be drafted would be would actually work in our favor or would put us in line to be adjusted again in two thousand twenty two and that July of two thousand twenty two, so the way the wage rates would be correct. Starting two thousand twenty two and need to be adjusted again or brought forward to the council again in July of twenty two to make the next year's changes, so.
But in twenty twenty two, would they get an increase in two thousand twenty two in January is what I'm asking, should that be in this? Resolution?
I believe the way I did the numbers, this reflects this would this would reflect the two thousand twenty two number, this wage increase, the proposed wage increase, so there would not there would not be another wage increase done until January first of two thousand twenty three is how we've historically done it, it's always been the January after the general election.
I I only ask these questions, this is the, it's really funky how the statute dictates city councils and setting salary. Other local units of government doing it on an annual basis, takes effect the following year. But in this particular statute, you you have to align on a certain time period and it's it's kind of funky and and I realize that most council members are not in it for the money, obviously. It is hard to get caught up if you skip years. And it's politically never favorable to to do so, so you're in a tough spot. So I'll just leave it at that and I just wanted to ask questions on the on the years of raises.
Okay, thank you, Steve, you had a point I legally interrupted you.
Yeah, no, I that's fine, the what I was going to say is that, you know, like Sharon said, it's never politically correct to raise your own salaries and and I bring up what I'm about to bring up just for people and interest in running for city council, you know, city council is a job that is not easy. It's certainly got a lot of time consumption, you're never gonna, I mean, this is not a full time job. But we want people to run, you know, I want people to run who are interested. And if it's lack of a salary to compensate them slightly for their time. Maybe we do need to invest in it and maybe it is a good attractant. I'm not going to say a good attractant, but an attractant to encourage others to run for city council. Just something to think about and I like Councilmember Labatt's query about getting something in writing and up for the public to see of how we line up against other cities of similar size. I just looked up my hometown Cloquet, Minnesota, and they're at about nine thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars and they're about the same size as Marshall. So, you know, that's just something to think about and what do we want to look at as we grow our city and as we try to attract more people into roles in government in our city, we are of the people and by the people and for the people and we want to attract people to come in, so something to think about.
Any other input? Otherwise, the again, the action would be either no action or move to introduce for consideration at the next council meeting.
So explain that a little further, Bob. If we don't do anything, what does that mean?
If you don't do anything, everything would stay exactly where they're at right now. The if you you want to make a change, then you would need to introduce. And the timing of this is that it need or under our charter, it needs to be considered in the month of July. So it would need to be introduced at this meeting for consideration. At the July twenty eighth meeting.
So on a point of order, you know, given that there's so much unknown going forward, we've already taken a slice in our salaries from what we are in two thousand nineteen. Would it be possible to introduce this and then reconsider and pull back depending like we did this for this year?
That would be absolutely a possibility, sure.
Well, then I would move to introduce it.
Motion by Steve, is there a second?
Second that.
That could invite Craig, discussion? If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yeah.
Glenn Bearcooler.
No.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
No.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number twenty one, agenda number twenty one is to consider the application for exempt permit for the SMSU Foundation for January thirteenth, two thousand twenty one. So anyone have any issues with this? Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Seconded by Craig, discussion? If not, Kyle, take the vote.
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
I'm staying.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to agenda number twenty two to consider the appointments to the board, various boards, commissions. The we have an opening on the housing commission and again, because we're in the in the situation that we're in with really not being able to interview applicants. We did accept the application for a reappointment to the housing commission for Patricia Noben. Her term would and new term would be would expire on May thirty first, two thousand twenty five. I would offer that as a recommendation, entertain a motion to affirm.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Steve, seconded by Russ, this discussion?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
There is a appointment to the planning commission as well. If you wanted to address that.
I missed that one, can you give us the details on that one, I I don't have the name right in front of me. I do have it. Bruce Neef would be considered for reappointment, I apologize for missing that. To an unexpired term. That would expire May thirty first, two thousand twenty three. Would you include that in your motion?
I most certainly would.
And second?
Yes, I would.
Yep. Now, discussion on that motion. If not, we'll move to a vote, Kyle?
Mayor Burns.
Yes.
Craig Schaefer.
Yes.
Steve Meister.
Yes.
Glenn Bearcooler.
Yes.
John De Kramer.
Yes.
Russ Labatt.
Yes.
Jim Lozinski.
Yes.
And the motion does pass. We'll move then to a commission board liaison reports from my part. The Fire Relief Association Board of Trustees is actually meeting right now, so. So that meeting conflicted with this meeting, but I believe Carla Drone is is attending that. The Southwest Regional Development Commission has been very active, the as I mentioned in a couple of previous meetings. I chair the revolving loan fund that's been in place since nineteen ninety four. And that's been an active fund with COVID, they did receive from EDA a invitation to apply on a non competitive basis for one point four eight million dollars, so our committee has been very active and meeting on a weekly basis to develop the loan guidelines, which will be for COVID impacted businesses, which is basically every business. And it would be for zero percent interest for the first year, deferred payments for the first three months. And then beyond that first year, the interest would be at one percent below prime, which right now that is approximately two point two percent for the term of the loan and the term would be dependent on, you know, what type of need that there is, so it's a really a good opportunity and that loan committee and that loan fund is very, very active right now. With that, I'll move to let me see, which which end should we start on the Steve or Craig, we'll start with you, Craig?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, the airport commission met last Monday, I was not able to attend, so I would defer to Jason if there's any pertinent information that needs to be brought forward, that's all I have.
Okay, and now Steve.
So EDA meets tomorrow. Community services did not meet.
And Glenn?
At our last planning commission meeting, we the planning commission acted on agenda item number sixteen that we acted on tonight.
At our last Planning Commission meeting, we, the Planning Commission acted on agenda item number sixteen that we acted on tonight. Housing Commission met yesterday, and I was out of town, so I was unable to attend that meeting. That's it.
John?
As mentioned, EDA meets tomorrow. Utility meeting did not meet since our last city council meeting, and it meets next Tuesday night.
Okay, Russ?
There, sorry. Library Board met last night. Again, as past months, we've talked about the COVID and, and the effects of the library. Ballaton and Cottonwood remain closed at this time. Marshall has done a good job. Just a point of information, even though their visits were up over last month, they still are down in the Marshall Library by about over forty percent for the year. They only had about twenty-eight hundred visits, which is up over last month, so that's a good thing. So people are going there. People are still getting curbside service for their materials, so it's a good thing. Police Advisory Board just met briefly. As we all know, Sergeant Tim Tomasic retired after thirty-one years. So we met and approved the hiring and the promotional process to begin with a tentative start date or hire date of sometime in September. So that process will continue for the next few months. CVB met today, and they continue, the staff continues to work on the new website. They're working on Red Baron Arena and the bookings. The booking weddings for two thousand and twenty-one are ready. As we know, the arena opened up. They're working on the sponsorships as well. We addressed the, we know we're getting less revenue company coming in with the lodging and the sales tax information. So, or financials. So we're also looking at the overall expenses to see where we can maybe find some savings. On a positive note, I didn't write down, but Austin, Minnesota backed out of holding, I believe. Don't correct me, I could be wrong, a thirteen, fourteen-year-old baseball tournament. So Marshall picked that up. They will be hosting a baseball tournament here in Marshall, the twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth of July. And the hotels reported that they are nearly at capacity for that weekend. So that's a good sign. So that's all I have, thank you.
Hey, Jim?
My committees did not meet, and as was previously reported on City Hall, I think we covered that pretty thoroughly at the start of the meeting. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Jim. We'll move then to Councilmember Individual Items. Craig, let's start on your side.
I have nothing to bring forward at this time, thank you.
Steve?
So I would thank the city staff for following up on a complaint I got from a constituent on a potential prejudicial complaint. And they acted thoroughly and did a really good job on that, and I appreciate that. I also want to remind everybody, I'm going to wear the doctor hat now. Please wear your mask when you're out and wear them the right way. It's kind of frustrating for me to see people wearing a mask and having their nose hanging out. Doesn't really do much then. Wear the mask appropriately. Be cognizant of this COVID. It is on the surge again. We're doing a community testing in Tyler tomorrow. And they're going to take a lot of the framework and the playbook that we did as this community of Marshall, and they're going to apply it to Tyler, and we'll see how that goes for them. That's about it.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Glenn?
I, I think the city attorney is there, isn't he?
He is.
Could you ask the city attorney, what was the cost of buying the Marshall Hotel property? What was the total purchase price?
I believe it's two hundred and ten thousand dollars for purchase price.
Okay. The reason I'm asking that is there was a two thousand and fourteen appraisal of that hotel property. And the appraised value was seventy-five thousand dollars, and that's if the property were structurally sound. And in his report, the appraiser indicated that the cost to raise the hotel building, to tear it down and redevelop the site, would be cost prohibitive. In other words, it wouldn't make any sense. It would cost you more to tear it down than what you could sell it for. I believe the total cost for the project so far are eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. And that's two hundred and ten thousand for a purchase price. And then we have demolition costs of five hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars. We had a change in architectural fees of twenty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. And then I believe we had removal of hazardous materials costs of seventy-two thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars. The total of all of those is eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. I, I communicated with the city assessor, and I asked him, when we're done with the property, demolishing the hotel, and we have a bear lot, how much is it going to be worth? And according to the city assessor, after demolition, the bear lot will have an assessed value of somewhere between forty-two and fifty-two thousand dollars. In other words, the property has a negative net worth of between seven hundred and eighty thousand and seven hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So the city is investing eight hundred and thirty-one thousand, and we're going to receive something of value between forty-two and fifty-two thousand dollars. That's a pretty big loss. At, at this point in time, it looks like the purchase of the hotel property does not appear to be a very good business decision and not a good use of taxpayer dollars. Now, the reason I'm bringing that up is I, I feel that the hotel project should be reviewed by staff and council to see if there are any lessons we can learn from that project. Or are there any actions that we can take to reduce our loss? Now, we had a structural engineer report on that. Does a structural engineer have any financial liability regarding his estimate and his condition of the building? So again, this is a pretty big cost to the taxpayers. And I, like I said, I think the city council and city staff should review this matter, see if there's any lessons we can learn, and if there's any action we can take to reduce our losses. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay. John?
Two items, I guess, want to bring up. One is probably not real critical, but had a constituent ask that I bring up that if you're going to dump some grass or clippings or even brush out at the compost site, don't go way out away from the pile and dump it where people have to try and drive around it and through it or whatever. End up in little piles all over the place, and then the city has to come in and try and push it all up. Please try to bring it up to the pile as close as you can and dump it. I know there's mud and there's some smells and things like that, but, you know, that's all part of a compost pile. And just try to maneuver in so you're not spreading that grass. At least I know I've seen it where it's about four car lengths away from the pile. So, and just little piles in between, you try and dodge through. That's one. Second item, like I mentioned, it probably is a little unusual. First time it happened to me tonight, that I was knocked off internet connection, but kind of brings up topic that I said I was going to bring up. And what's the intent for these meetings? Is there a possibility that we can safely, following all criteria that put out by the governor, that we can get back together and have regular city council meetings? Just thought I'd bring that up.
So Sharon and Kyle and Alex, I think you all had some discussion about that. Some of that is dependent on what our regular meeting site, how that's configured, and what school district, what would be possible in that boardroom. And then the other issue is, you know, if, I know there's some cities where some people are in person and some are on Zoom. Zoom would be a more of a problem at school district because it's not on our system, the way I understand it. Input, sure?
And certainly, we could have Alex come up, I think, and talk about the technology aspect. I'm personally sick of Zoom. I, tonight was kind of frustrating. I'm sure it was for most of you and, and the viewers. However, do we sit close to each other at this point? We have Dr. Meister advocating for wearing a mask, and I suspect he would advocate for social distancing. Yep, that's a consideration.
I look a lot better with a mask on.
I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to, but I didn't want to offend you.
My understanding is the school board is not, all of them are not meeting yet together. There's some of them that are. I think the county board as another venue is spaced apart. We could, I don't know, Alex, maybe you want to talk about this? We could open up this room and spread apart. That's something to think about. That way we can maybe all see each other, but from a distance. So, yeah, I, I think, you know, maybe all of us could agree we don't like this arrangement. It's kind of getting old. It's nice to see somebody's face, and you can tell body movements, things like that, that does speak language too. But do we want to be sitting close to each other? And, I don't know, Alex, do you want to get up and talk about technology just for a brief moment? I'm sorry to do that to you, but that might help us understand what, what the capacity is here.
It's a lot of fun to have to move the camera before I get up here. Hopefully you can hear me, because if you can't, I can't unmute me, so sorry. As for technology, in all honesty, it's, it's very simple. It's as simple as it can be here at the Merritt Center. That's why we really pushed for this from the get-go. It, it likely would be possible in a different location. It would just be much more labor-intensive on our part to set, unset, set, reset every single time. Personally, I think the biggest part of this, putting on my emergency side, is, is whether or not we should be meeting in person. I know we all want to, trust me, nobody wants to more than I do, because it's a lot easier that way. But I think that needs to be the deciding factor here. I can make technology work pretty much anywhere, for the most part. My preference is here, obviously, but I'll leave it up, up to the, to you folks and, and to the, the people who know whether or not it's safe, because safety is very important.
What if we opened up this room and made it bigger? Is that still difficult technology-wise?
It wouldn't be as difficult as moving to a fully different location.
Okay.
So it's, it's certainly possible, yeah.
The, you know, I would echo probably what John and Sharon have said. I, I like anybody would like to get back to normal as, or as much as, as soon as possible. On the other hand, when is that possible? And that's really not a city government decision as much as it is really a medical decision. And that's why I tend to turn to Dr. Meister for kind of his professional input. And so Steve, I don't know if you have anything more you want to add?
Well, you know, again, the, this virus is, is new, and, and we're learning stuff about it every day, and it changes. I mean, ask me in two weeks what, what's different from today, and I'll have a whole bunch of things. And so the facts are right now that the numbers are going up, but the deaths are going down. That being said, we, when it first came out, we said kids weren't affected, and now we know that kids are affected. People who get it, there's, the vast majority are walking around completely asymptomatic, and asymptomatic spread is a big deal. So right now, there's one, two, three, four, five, six of you in there. The chances are that one of you may be positive and carrying it around. We don't know. And, you know, if there's ten of you in there, eight are going to be fine, and two are going to get sick. And one is, less than one is going to get really sick, and you don't know which one. And, you know, statistics would say the older people in there would probably be a little more prone to getting sick. But that too has changed, as we've seen twenty and thirty-year-olds who have no underlying medical conditions getting really sick and suffering for months. And months being, we don't know, they may go on for years and have side effects. So it's a gamble. If we're going to let that open up, I would say, let's just let people make their own decisions for their own health and have the freedom to do as they choose for themselves and their family. I, for one, would probably not show up as much as I would love to, because if I get sick, it's not a good thing. But I would love to be there. I miss, I miss the camaraderie of being in council chambers with the fellow council members and bantering about and, and discussing the business of the city in person. But I think that this is the next best thing. So that's, that's the medical professional's opinion.
Okay, and thank you, Steve. So can we leave it at this? That staff will explore the options of using both rooms at the Merritt Center and still connect by Zoom, but have the option of council members that they want to be in person or at Zoom. And now, and if so, staff would need to know that, so the room can be configured appropriately. And then I believe masks would probably need to be required if we have more people. Does that make sense?
That makes complete sense.
Everyone else okay with that?
Yes.
I see nod, so good. Okay, let me see, Russ, John, do you have any more?
No, I was, thank you.
Russ?
The only thing I have is probably just echo what Dr. Meister said and go against what Sharon said. I kind of like Zoom. You can sit at home and, and just be yourself, be yourself at a council chamber as well. But it's, it's easy to come at home, but I'll do whatever. All I have.
And Jim?
I had about a ten-page feature, but you guys took too long on the other subject, so I'll cut it short. I want to say Jason's been working, we, we've had issues with the alley behind Whitney Street, and Jason's been working hard with those folks to get that resolved. And thank you, Jason, for the solution you came up with, I think should work. So I just want to give kudos to him. Other than that, I don't really have anything. I do want to comment on Glenn, on your comment on the hotel. Yes, it's costing eight hundred thousand, nine hundred thousand. I believe, though, and Sharon, you and I visited, we have a private developer come in to fix that hotel up. It was north of a million dollars in tax dollars, they would have wanted to do a redevelopment. So yes, it's costing us eight hundred thousand. A redevelopment of that hotel could have ran us a million, a million and a half dollars. So we had to pick the worst of two evils. We could not just leave the building, sit there for another thirty years falling apart. So I just wanted to comment on that.
Thank you, Jim.
The response I have to that is, did we pay too much when we paid two hundred and ten thousand for that building, though?
Dennis, wasn't that kind of court ordered through a, I can't think of the right word on that property?
There, there was a condemnation proceeding that was initiated, yes. And that was a mediated settlement approved by council at that time.
And can I also just, I'm sorry to keep going here, but part of those fees or that amount that was paid was lawyer fees, correct?
Correct, yes.
No offense to the lawyers, but part of the cost wasn't the property, it was paying for an attorney on the other side.
Yeah, he had to pay the other sides.
Not Dennis, the other side.
Jim, do you have any more? Okay, from my standpoint, I have four things I'll cover, and I'll go quickly here. The, first off, last, we haven't met since the Fourth of July. So lots of good comments about the fireworks display and how that was able to be conducted, and it was a good display, it was a nice evening. So thank you to the staff that worked on that. Second, Dr. Meister would be interested in this. I've been receiving a substantial amount of input from the public, both letters and emails and phone calls, encouraging a mandate on use of masks in the, in the community. And my response to that has been that, that's really has been kind of individuals' best judgment. And it's really hard for a community to mandate mask use and then enforce it. So we've done pretty well by community cooperation with the citizens in this community. You know, if it was probably a broader mandate, that would be just not one community and then the next community doing something different. That might be more manageable, but I guess my response would be, it would be really tough and probably not able to adequately enforce it if we had a mask mandate in the community. So if anybody has other input on that, you know, I'm open to that. The, earlier in the work session, I did report on the, on the latest sales tax report. And that's the, the complete report always is several months. And that's the the complete report always is several months lagging. But today we received the report for April and our general use sales tax compared to April 2019 is down 3.5%. Many would have expected that it would be down more, but I think that speaks to the kind of the regional nature of our retailers, our larger retailers and in the community that it's only down 3.5%. On the other hand, as was mentioned earlier in the CBB report, you know, lodging was down in substantially 62% in the month of April compared to April 2019. And food and beverage was down 39%. So food and beverage and lodging is down substantially. General use, sales tax and use tax is down, but down 3.5%. And probably, you know, we, I would be speculating here, but by April would be probably one of the months that was most impacted, especially by the lodging industry, because I think, you know, things as was talked about with, you know, people coming back and doing business that with the lodging and food and beverage industry, while we're still affected, probably are doing better than they were in the month of April. But we will know that once the May reports and June reports come out. And then finally, let me talk about the CARES funding. As I think we all know, the city has received 1,38,415 in CARES funding. And that, so that's money we have received. It's in the city's bank account. It's for eligible COVID-19 related expenses or investments to help entities that are impacted. So my recommendation, and I think I refer this to staff also for probably future action, that we do a couple of things of that million 38,000 dollars that we identify. And I know staff has been working on this, the identify our costs that have been incurred so far since March related to COVID-19. And then, you know, document that and then reserve perhaps 50% more than that for unanticipated costs that would be incurred between now and the end of the year. And that the remaining amount would be made available under the direction of the EDA to businesses, both for profit and nonprofit organizations that have a demonstrated need from impacts of COVID-19, that that would be, and that would be an eligible cost under the CARES Act that we could make that investment. And then I'd further recommend that we, because this is an unbudgeted amount, this is a large amount, that we establish a CARES Fund Oversight Committee. And the composition of that that I'd recommend would be that that be composed of city council, EDA, and then staff. So the two members of the city council who are actually our liaisons to the EDA plus myself, and then two representatives from the EDA, one being the chairperson and one and the other appointed by the chairperson and the city administrator and the EDA director. And that that Oversight Committee would, you know, kind of review the general parameters of of what's being documented and for the expenditure of that 1.1 million 38,415. So I make that suggestion. I don't know if we need to take any action on that, but I just offer that. And I think we'll have probably further discussion on that, both at the staff and council level at the future meeting. With that, that's all I have this evening. I'll turn to the next.
Ask you a question?
Yes.
Okay, so those are your suggestions and so forth. So what is going to happen then? Or is the city, is it going to come back before the city council and we're going to formally approve something? Or is city staff just going to do what they want to do with it? Or exactly what's going to happen here? What's the procedure that's going to be followed?
Well, I'm informing the council at this point. I mean, if the council has other ideas, they can bring that up. But that really is my direction is to form that Oversight Committee. As well as that, that would be the, we have the funds. It's just a matter of documenting how we're going to utilize those funds.
But is that something that the city council should discuss and act upon?
Well, that would be up to the council. If you want to take formal actions, not necessary though, but.
Can I just add something to this? I think a committee or a work group, as the mayor suggested, is really good. We have guidance from the U.S. Treasury Agency or Department federally on how the money can be allocated or used. We know that as recent as last Wednesday, those those guidance documents have been updated. So last, last week, we, you know, discovered something new. The identification of costs per the city that could be submitted as part of the CARES Act funding. That's something we do really need to nail down. Is is the proposal to allocate, identify our costs and then figure 50% more. I'm a, I'm a little hesitant to say that's the best direction. I'm not disagreeing. It's just, I think, I think the capacity for the city in terms of what we spent on COVID to get near a half a million, I think it's very real. And if you allocate 50% more, it may, it may leave business assistance less than what we want to, where we want to be. So as the mayor suggests, identification costs are really good first step. We just got, got the money, really technically just got it. And again, the guidance is is changing. The EDA assistance that may be provided, we've typically had the EDA board approve any grant applications. You wouldn't have to. You could have everyone come back here, but typically the EDA board has done that. So you've, you do kind of have a city council and EDA board that really could kind of work together. If you have a committee made up of city council members and EDA board members, I think that would be really well, really helpful for staff. In terms of staff, we know that I believe this would put us into a federal audit requirement. We, we may have some requirements by Minnesota Management and Budget. We haven't heard a lot from them yet in terms of what they want to see for documentation. But we know on our side, we'd hate to give money out to businesses or kind of infer that we're going to try to get reimbursement and then be later told it's not eligible. So we really do want to be careful on on how the money is utilized. So I probably said more than enough, but it does kind of get back to having that committee that the mayor suggested for council and EDA board. And I'll take it back to the full council. We could do that. We could take it back to full EDA. I know EDA tomorrow is going to consider EDA assistance parameters for, for the CARES Act money. I don't, I don't know if we're ready yet or not. I mean, one of the things I suggested to the chair is that it maybe be a recommendation to council or to the committee. So, yeah, a lot, still kind of learning, but definitely want input from council and EDA board.
Any other input from the council?
With regard to the 50% extra that you're going to hold back for extra expenses, if that is not all needed, what what would happen to that money? And I would like to see when all is said and done that, that the council have a report given to us as to where the money went to, what it was used for. Anyway, I'm a believer in communication and full disclosure. And I think that's important.
My understanding is that we do not utilize all the money. It can go to the county and the county has interest in being notified. If if at any point in time, we don't think we'll utilize the the funds, that they they can then tap into those funds as well. I know that the school district, school system in the, in Marshall, I think they've been allocated about 400,000. Now, if you look at what requirements may come in terms of getting school back, getting students back into the school system, transportation, sanitation, delivery of meals on a daily basis, their 400,000 likely is not going to cover what their needs are. And they've got to divvy that up among, among the parochial schools too, so it's not just to the Marshall School District. So I don't know what the hospital does or does not get in CARES Act funding. That's a question. I oppose the Mary Martins. That may have some interest. We know another provision of CARES Act, and this relates to sales tax for food, beverage and lodging, is that some of the CARES Act funding can be used for for promotion of terrorism industry to kind of get some of that back. So when we look at a reduction in food, beverage and lodging, we can maybe compensate for some of that through the CARES Act, because we do have a need to kind of bring some of that back and promote that. So that's going to be really important as well. We also know too in the CARES Act, if there's staff that's dedicated to COVID over the last several months and going forward, they clearly state in the guidance, public safety. And we know, you know, i.e. Jim Marshall has probably devoted 80% of his time since March 9th to this. So, you know, those are some things we're going to be looking at.
And Glenn, the, you know, the 50% that I threw out, you know, that may or may not be the right number. The, it was just, I was just acknowledging that our costs haven't ended. That, you know, and we don't know what between now and December are going to be. So I was just, you know, that we should anticipate that some of those funds are yet to be used, so.
I don't want to keep going on. I know we did, the city volunteered, quote unquote, or assisted with the testing clinic. That was occurred mid-June in in Lyon County at the Avera site. We documented time, materials for that three day event. That was 22,000 for a three day event. That wasn't full time by our employees, you know, by all of them. Some of it was. So it doesn't take long to, to get to a large number by the amount of time that has been spent on this pandemic. And I know some of the staff, you know, kind of know this from mid-March. I mean, obviously our hospital system definitely knows it, but sounds like a lot of money. It's probably not. I mean, I think we'll have a good case for utilization.
I think we've all seen this and probably for the last couple of weeks, there's been, you know, the guidance on the CARES Act funding, whether it's through the League of Cities or Make Fratelli, or there's been lots of information that I know staff, I know I have going through to try to have the most current information. So, but things have been moving pretty fast too, so.
One last comment. Is it fair to say that the more the city uses the funds, the less funds available to help the businesses? So it's kind of a tough decision process area. I mean, the more we end up using, the less is available to help the businesses that are suffering. And and what's the proper trade off?
Well, and and that's the reason to document and account for what are the actual costs that we've incurred so far. And I know that's what staff has been working hard on. Okay, so obviously this is going to be a continued discussion at probably our next meeting also. So with that, let me move then to staff reports. Do you have anything more, Sharon?
I just want to follow up on your sales tax data, those percentages. Those are really important. And, and, you know, your 3.5% for general sales tax, if you look at actual dollars, it's $4,000 off. That's, that's what the percentage is. So we're really, really close on general sales tax and that's positive news for for the city of Marshall. On the food, beverage and lodging, I know in one category you said 60%, the other one 40%. When we heard some reports from hotels and maybe restaurants as well, we heard 80% reduction in in business. And I know CBB has been in communication with their, with the council liaison, council member Labatt too as well, which has been really helpful to have that communication back and forth. So, you know, with these figures, it's less, it's a less impact than I originally thought. So I'm a little gratified by that. And I did the actual numbers and I think we're 20,000 off, which is, you know, you start adding that up month by month. That can start to be a big number, but 20,000 is better than 40,000.
That's for food, beverage and lodging.
That's for food, beverage and lodging, so. But anyway, I just wanted to follow up and put actual numbers to it. Sometimes we get stuck on percentages and it's nice to look at the numbers. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor.
Jason?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Councilman Schaefer referenced the airport commission and I would just state that we did meet and TKDA, our consultant, was present to discuss the airport CIP with the commission and that was a good conversation. The CIP was discussed and specifically storage for the snow removal equipment out there was was discussed as maybe an item that we need to start to investigate through an engineering review of what it would cost and where the funds would come from to to potentially erect a building sometime down the road in the years coming. So we do have FAA entitlement funds that could be used to finance that study. And we'll, we'll start losing those funds if we don't spend them by next fall. So we figured that, that that's one item that got put to the forefront of the CIP for consideration. And that's something we can talk about going forward. Councilman Wazinski mentioned that alley catch basin and, you know, that's a, that's a good item to discuss just briefly that. You know, I know that Councilman Schaefer has brought that up with me as well. And we've been hearing from the property owners and the neighbors along that alley. And we're aware of their concerns with some drainage issues after our project was completed. And our street department and our engineering department are working together to resolve the issue. We had a pre-job today for the Legion Pond project and we learned that the contractor is looking at an early September start date. Forest Street project is starting. You've seen the road surface strip between Country Club Drive and is it gray? I think it's, it's just up the road from Camden there and they'll start their underground work there. First Street project won't begin until early September, late August at the earliest. So I think that's all.
Okay, any questions for Jason? If not, Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Just following up on what Jason ended with, the Legion Field Road area, that pond can now proceed because we have completed the Buffalo Ridge concrete plat. It was necessary to plat the property because the owner of that property, Buffalo Ridge Concrete, has transferred to the city property that will be used for the, for the ponding in that area that phase one out there. So, and that plat, plat has been finished and the deed transferring the property to the city marshal has been filed as well. So I think we're pretty well set up for that project to begin. The contract has been approved. And you said, Jason, what early September start date in the contract says a November 16 end date. So hopefully that project will be in yet this fall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Dennis. The remaining items on the agenda, the administrator brief, you have that. Your, the information items, which includes the building permits as well as the listing of upcoming meetings. Any comments on any of those agenda items? If not, that brings us to
We move to adjourn.
Motion by Craig.
Back then.
Back then by Jim to adjourn discussion. If not, we'll do a voice vote on this. All those favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We're adjourned.